Right, roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Here.
Mr. Cabrera.
I am here. Compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, and those requirements have been satisfied as to the time, place, and date of holding said meeting by posting notice on the bulletin board here in Borough Hall and by emailing the same to the Herald of Cape May County and the Press of Atlantic City on October 15th, 2024. In the event of an emergency, your emergency exit is the door you came in, or front left, or back right, or the door just by the American flag. Couple of quick announcements. This meeting is being shown live here today on the Borough's Facebook and YouTube channel. Want to do a quick sound check. Brian, we good to go? All right? If you are watching this meeting live and you want to ask a public comment, or make a public comment, ask a question, you can dial the access code 888-363-4734. And when prompted, you're going to enter the access code 969-9020, followed by the pound or the hashtag. If you are watching this meeting live on YouTube or the Facebook channel and you make a comment on the comment sections on social media, it will not be checked. The only way to make a public comment is to use the dial-in conference line. If you watch the recorded version of this meeting, you're more than welcome to make your statement, comment, or opinion to our clerk, clerk@wildwoodcrest.org by email or phone 609-729-8040. Speaking of our clerk, Madam Clerk, we have ordinances for today.
Yes, we do. The first is Ordinance 1457 regarding construction fees for permits.
Motion that ordinance number 1457 be placed on second reading and final passage by title only.
Second it.
It has been moved in second that ordinance number 1457 be placed on second and final reading by title only.
Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Ordinance 1457 reads as follows. An ordinance of the Borough of Wildwood Crest, amending and supplementing the code of the Borough of Wildwood Crest, Article 1, Uniform Construction Code of Chapter 22, amending fees for permits.
Motion that a public hearing now be held on ordinance number 1457.
I'll second it.
It has been moved in second that a public hearing on ordinance number 1457 now be held.
Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes. Floor is open for public comment on ordinance number 1457, construction fees for permits. Start with anybody here in the audience today. Okay, anybody on the conference line? Public comment, ordinance number 1457. Hearing done?
Motion that a public hearing at ordinance number 1457 now be closed.
I'll second it.
It has been moved in second that the public hearing on ordinance number 1457 now be closed.
Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Motion that ordinance number 1457 be passed on second and final reading and advertised according to law.
Second it.
It has been moved in second that ordinance number 1457 be passed on second and final reading and advertised according to law.
Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next, we have ordinance 1458 regarding Chapter 67 for street opening days and dates.
Motion that ordinance number 1458 be placed on second reading and final passage by title only.
Second it.
It has been moved in second that ordinance number 1458 be placed on second and final reading by title only.
Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Ordinance 1458 reads as follows. An ordinance of the Borough of Wildwood Crest, amending and supplementing the code of the Borough of Wildwood Crest, Chapter 67, Uniform Construction Code, Section 67-4, Restoration of Excavated Area.
Motion that a public hearing now be held on ordinance number 1458.
Second.
It has been moved in second that a public hearing now be held on ordinance number 1458.
Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes. Floor is open for public comment, ordinance number 1458. Anybody in the audience? Yes, sir. Anybody on the conference line have any public comments on ordinance number 1458? Hearing done?
Motion that a public hearing on ordinance number 1458 now be closed.
I'll second it.
It has been moved in second that the public hearing on ordinance number 1458 now be closed.
Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Motion that ordinance number 1458 be passed in second and final reading and advertised according to law.
I'll second it.
It has been moved in second that ordinance number 1458 be passed on second and final reading and advertised according to law.
Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next, we have ordinance 1459 regarding the salary ordinance.
Motion that ordinance number 1459 be placed on second reading and final passage by title only.
Second.
It has been moved in second that ordinance number 1459 be placed on second and final reading by title only.
Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Ordinance 1459 reads as follows. An ordinance to amend Section 59-3 of the Code of the Borough of Wildwood Crest, known as the Salary Ordinance, fixing and determining salaries and compensations of the Borough of Wildwood Crest, and providing for the raising of the amounts thereof by taxation and for the time and method of payment.
Motion that a public hearing now be held on ordinance number 1459.
Second it.
It has been moved in second that a public hearing on ordinance number 1459 now be held.
Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes. Floor is open for public comment on ordinance number 1459. Anybody here in the audience? Moving to the conference line, anybody have public comment? Ordinance number 1459. Hearing done?
Motion that a public hearing at ordinance number 1459 now be closed.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay, we're all good.
You seconded it.
It has been moved in second that the public hearing on ordinance number 1459 now be closed.
Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Motion that ordinance number 1459 be passed on second and final reading and advertised according to law.
I will second.
It has been moved in second that ordinance number 1459 be passed on second and final reading and advertised according to law.
Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
A very long wait. Next, we have ordinance 1460, and it reads as follows. An ordinance of the Borough of Wildwood Crest, amending and supplementing Chapter 85 of the Borough of Wildwood Crest Land Use Ordinance, to regulate insurance requirements for wireless communication facilities in the public rights of way.
Motion that ordinance number 1460 be passed on first reading, advertised according to law, be brought up for second and final reading, a public hearing on June 25th, 2025, at 5:00 p.m.
I will second.
It has been moved in second that ordinance number 1460 passed on first reading, advertised according to law, be brought up for second and final reading, a public hearing on June 25th, 2025, at 5:00 p.m.
Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Lastly is ordinance 1461, and it reads as follows. An ordinance of the Borough of Wildwood Crest, amending and supplementing Article 13 of Chapter 79, Vehicles and Traffic of the Code of the Borough of Wildwood Crest, to regulate traffic signals within the borough.
Motion that ordinance number 1461 be passed on first reading, advertised according to law, be brought up for second and final reading, a public hearing of June 25th, 2025, at 5:00 p.m.
I'll second.
It has been moved in second that ordinance number 1461 be passed on first reading, advertised according to law, be brought up for second and final reading and public hearing on June 25th, 2025, at 5:00 p.m.
Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next, we have the resolutions. The first is endorsing a fourth round Housing Element and Fair Share Plan.
I will motion.
Second that.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing a ward of proprietary purchase of goods or services with Clean Air Company for ply-movement fire vehicle exhaust extraction systems for public works at the not exceed sum $44,450.80.
Motion.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes. Clean Air Company for ply-movement fire vehicle exhaust extraction system, that is a mouthful.
Correct.
Yes.
They all work.
Next is determining the form and other details of not exceeding $4 million general bonds and notes in anticipation thereof of the Borough of Wildwood Crest in the County of Cape May, New Jersey, and providing for their sale to the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank and the State of New Jersey, and authorizing the execution and delivery of certain agreements in connection therewith.
Motion. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
That was also lengthy, that was a mouthful. Next is authorizing the use of urban enterprise funds designated for the Borough of Wildwood Crest from fiscal year 2025 for additional planning services related to the New Jersey Avenue Streetscape Project.
Motion.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
And I need to pull the next one, so we go to the number six. Authorizing the appointment of Kathy Straub as a member of the Wellness Committee for the Borough of Wildwood Crest for the remainder of 2025.
Motion.
I will second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing Resolution Number 25-163 to be rescinded in totality.
Motion.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is establishing a Wildwood Crest EMS ride-along volunteer program.
Motion.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing a service agreement with Time Clock Plus LLC for public safety policy management software, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement.
Motion.
I will second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing increase of contract in the amount of $18,000 to Acuity Consulting Services for Affordable Housing Planner and Administrative Agent for calendar year 2025.
Motion.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing approval to submit a grant application and execute a grant contract with the New Jersey Department of Transportation, fiscal year 2025, Local Transportation Projects Fund for the reconstruction of Denver Avenue from Pacific Avenue to New Jersey Avenue.
I'll motion it.
I will second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing approval to submit a grant application and execute a grant contract with the New Jersey Department of Transportation, fiscal year 2026, Municipal Aid Program for the reconstruction of Denver Avenue from Bayview Drive to New Jersey Avenue.
Motion.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
And lastly is authorizing the appointment of one Class 1 police officer.
I'll motion it.
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Motion that all bills properly authorized as submitted be paid.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that all bills properly authorized as submitted be paid. Roll call. Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
And Mr. Cabrera.
Yes. Okay, thank you, Trish.
You are very welcome.
No correspondence listed, nothing listed on their new business for discussion. We'll just go through old business here real quick. 250th Birthday Committee, continue to send your interest to our clerk. Municipal App is on hold, Historical Museum at the Rescue Building is on hold, Possession Agreement, Hotel Zone and Beach Chairs on hold. That was on hold as a result of the Dune Project. Is there any movement on this? If not, I think we should just take it off.
I was going to suggest that.
That's fine.
I will remove it.
Okay. Traffic calming, I believe there's still.
How would that work? Everything's straight, the walkway signs are up. I think we have a little bit more, but we're good.
Okay. Back peak excavation, emergency is done. Engineering is looking towards some bid specs for potentially for next year, 2026. Drudging, anything on that?
I have a call on the DOT, they have not responded to me, so I'm waiting to hear back from them.
Okay. Jersey Avenue Infrastructure Pre-County, we're just waiting for going out the bid on that. Beachfall outfalls in capacity, waiting on the grant writer. Army Corps and the Dune Project, so just to bring everybody up to speed, there's been really no movement on this whatsoever. The last word that we received from our solicitor, our special counsel, was that there is some interest now, despite some initial opposition to meeting, as an islandwide, with all the islandwide communities, in cooperation and conjunction with both the DEP and the Army Corps to talk through potential solutions. So it seems that there might be some movement off of the original plan. That meeting is tentatively scheduled or targeted for the end of July. Borough Hall renovations, we're just waiting for some paperwork to come in from our architect, and we'll be ready to start that project. Okay, that's all our old business. Commissioners, you have anything want to add?
Good, thank you.
Not today, sir.
Okay. Brings us to public comments. Anybody here have a public comment? Just come on up to the microphone. Do not need your address, just your name.
Okay. Good morning. My name is Suzanne Brown. I won't give my address, but the story's relative to where I live. I live on Bayview Drive. South side of my house faces, touches Hollywood and the north side of the park there, the Vet Park at Preston. We've owned the home since 2018. My elderly mom and my daughter there all summer, she's on her fifth year of the beach patrol, so they're there all year. And this issue has come up previously, and Mayor Cabrera was very helpful with it. And this was when the landscaping was proposed for that park, and the questions about the proximity to our property line. Mayor Cabrera was very helpful in that. And as you all know, the plans changed with the building of the turtle-shaped sand pit. And I know this, what the intention of this was to preserve our endangered species, our terrapin turtles. We live this, they're on our deck in our house, we've been taking care of them forever. But I think that what's happened is actually the opposite effect. This has escalated, this is now the third summer going in, and the last weekend was chaos on Bayview Drive. There are folks that, and there's one gentleman specific, the police have been there, but he's still continuing, he lives in lower township. He stalks, he parks his car in the little cul-de-sac there, he watches for turtles. He has been witnessed this weekend transporting turtles in his car and bringing them to this turtle pit. My husband has watched him walk up and down Hollywood Ave, bring turtles from other people's yards. As soon as the turtle lays the eggs, he grabs them. The turtles are scared, they retract. He's trespassing on property, putting them back in the marsh. He's been on our property, 8:30 in the morning, ringing the doorbell, putting handouts to convince us that this is the right thing. So my neighbor and I, who I believe is on the call, Michelle Machetti, she lives across the street. It really impacts three homes right there. And we've contacted the Wetlands Institute, spoken to Brian Williamson, who is the director there, and we have told them the situation. And they've given feedback that we're actually probably re-endangering the turtles by creating this literally like sort of circus atmosphere. And I have seen in the past summers, and I have photos of all of this, mothers building lemonade stands where the turtles, the mom turtles are laying the babies, and the kids are having a lemonade stand. The grandmother is actually encouraging the kids to play with the turtle while it's laying its eggs. Other non-paying-attention moms with the dogs, the dogs are almost biting the turtles while they're laying the eggs. I could go on and on. The sand also creates an atmosphere of, I have pictures of sandpipers are able to dig up the eggs. Whereas when they lay the eggs, like in our garden, I've watched mom turtles, they will dig up the mulch, the dirt, everything, really, really bury them. In the sand, the eggs are kind of close to the surface, and the sandpipers are eating them. Memorial Day weekend, we found a baby hatch turtle with its head off. That could happen anywhere, but the sand pit seems to be a focal point for folks that don't live around here or aren't familiar with the diamond terrapin turtles. So, and what really come to culmination this weekend, and coincidentally, the meeting is today, so I decided to come here, is that, I know we're talking about traffic calming in the borough, that little cul-de-sac there is now like a traffic jam on a Saturday afternoon. People are parking, stalk, the one gentleman stalks, he's out there all the time. His wife just, and this was sort of the turning point for me, his wife posted on the Wildwood Crest Facebook group this week, "Hi, I moved 30 turtles on Bayview this weekend." And then someone responds back, "Oh, where are you going to be? How can I come and help you?" So now it's become like a Facebook advertisement amusement park kind of thing, where it's creating chaos in our neighborhood. It's like a circus atmosphere. But I think the main thing for me is the intent was to help the turtles. And one got killed right there on Hollywood and Bayview this weekend. The police were, and it didn't even get killed, it was still alive. It was just, it was very upsetting. And I think that what we would like to propose is not just come with like a problem, but to have a solution also. And my neighbor and I, and I bet there's tons of other people, would be happy to be part of a group if that were decided, to volunteer to educate folks. I know the grant for this turtle sand pit was to educate folks about diamond terrapin turtles. But they read that sign that's placed on the rock, and the sign is very general about turtles. I think what the message needs to be is, don't touch them, help them cross the street, but don't pick them up, don't put them in your cars. They know where they laid the eggs, they've been doing this for thousands of years. So we would like to come with sort of a solution. And ultimately, we would like the commissioner and the board to, the commissioner and the board to consider, after this hatching season, the status of that sand pit. It just seems to be problematic, and maybe there's another thing that we could put there that helps preserve the turtles. There's no data really to show that putting the sand pit is increasing the longevity or the hatching of eggs. In fact, by all accounts, what I've observed is that it's actually creating the opposite effect. So, and for minimal, for this remainder of this hatching season, if the borough could provide some oversight, you know, some patrols or, I don't know what, but it was, if you were down there Saturday, it was chaos. And some of your patrol officers were there when the turtle got hit. So, just want to say that we're not coming with just an issue, but we'd like to be part of a solution if volunteers are needed. And I think my neighbor, Michelle's on the line, I don't know, Michelle, if you wanted to add anything? I don't know if she is. Well, if not, that's really what we were coming for, and thank you for your consideration of this issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Public comment?
I'm never bringing a question.
Seriously.
I'm not bringing a question, I'm coming over.
Go ahead. He can certainly ask the question.
He can come up here and say, he can answer the question.
Go ahead.
Good morning, Carl Schmoyer. Just like to bring to the attention of the commissioners, I had this discussion with Mayor Cabrera over the winter regarding the Cressy Avenue beach entrance, where the trash trucks and all the infrastructure comes in and out for the beach activities. Over the past weekend, this was not a Bayview incident, this was the opposite, there was almost a child struck on a bicycle coming down the ramp. And I talked to Chief Lloyd about this coincidentally after the last meeting, and I understand the Crest owns the beach entrance. And I don't know what you could do. And there's really else to say. It's, it seems, this seems to be progressively getting worse every year. Obviously, this traffic needs to occur on the beach to provide the infrastructure for everything that goes on in Wildwood, but if the Crest owns it, initially, I thought the plan was that the pilings were to stay in place, truck stops, removes the pilings, pulls through, then puts the pilings back in. When this was built, that probably lasted six weeks. And then, on that same topic, the light at Atlantic and Cressy on flash, I understand that has to be replaced. It's technically out of code or ordinance. Is that the Crest's responsibility, the city's responsibility?
Wow.
So, and, I'm sorry.
Do you have another one? I'll just do all through.
No, that's, I just, I was wondering, because again, that's on flash, and with the season starting, people are ignoring that flash as well. I personally almost was hit going south on Atlantic. Somebody just saw flashing and thought it was not a need to stop. And that's become a bit of an issue too. But the beach entrance is really becoming serious because of the bike ramp, people coming down that at a pretty high rate of speed.
So let me answer the flash and light first. I've been in discussions with Wildwood, I talked to our chief and also to Ralph Grassi in charge of public safety. For us, I'd like to be able to fix that like tomorrow morning, because I know that's a problem. That's a Wildwood problem. So the housing of that light is based on Wildwood's side. So we'll assist if we can, and I know that Mr. Grassi's been in touch, and we understand that's a problem. So the chief has been, do you want to say, talk about this?
Commissioner, I have an actual update for that.
Good.
The parts were in order, they've been received, and Wildwood's going to start working on replacing what needs to be replaced. It will definitely be operational before July 4th.
Perfect. Last one I heard, we were out 12 weeks for the parts, because that's an older, that's an older one.
Understood.
So we understand too, and this is like a side comment with the lights. The lights that are on the poles, the Atlantic Electric poles with the wire going across, eventually we have to take them all down. They have requested us to have freestanding lights, the ones that you're seeing that are being built. That's just a side thing. We've been looking, and we've been talking to Wildwood about the entrance and exit off the Cressy. That's a high-traffic area. You'll see this weekend, there's going to be tractor-trailers coming through. The chief was in discussions with their chief, and they've been kind enough, which they should do, is have a person there at least now directing traffic, holding up the bikes, and also moving the other vehicles in. We're trying to do something. It's difficult. Wildwood's putting up those ballards, have you noticed coming down Cressy off of the, yeah, so they put those there, and they're basically at every entrance on the boardwalk coming in. Chief and I will be talking about it. Chief, have anything to add to that, or are we okay?
We did order signs for either side of that entrance, both from the beach and entering from Cressy Avenue. It's a large sign that says, "Stop for pedestrians and bicyclists." It's a work in progress. I mean, the signs are our own order, we're just waiting for them to come in, and they will be installed as soon as we get them. There's a lot of different things that we're looking at trying to do there, but it's.
It's a difficult situation, and I witnessed this virtually on a daily basis, and some drivers are extremely respectful coming through there, others with no embellishment, start blowing the air horn about 25 yards before they get to the exit, to the exit, coming off, and just continue moving. They don't stop. And this is exactly what had happened over the weekend. And it was frightening to see. And exasperating the situation is, again, this bike ramp's like a skateboard ramp, it's a Speedway coming down there. I mean, you bike down in the wintertime, you can hit 30 miles an hour if you're.
Yeah, coming down.
If you're someone in your stature as far as physical agility. But anyway, it's, I hate to say, proverbial accident waiting to happen, but I would really hate to see something like that.
Well, we're aware of it. And unfortunately, we could put up a thousand signs.
Oh, a sign today.
You know what I mean? It's just, it's one thing after another. It's called common sense.
Yeah, and nobody has.
And a lot of people just don't use it. That's all. Got everything you wanted? And a lot of people just don't use it, that's all. Got everything you wanted?
Absolutely, just...
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Appreciate you listening. Thank you.
Anybody else have a comment? Anybody else on the conference line have any public comment? All right, we'll go to Commissioner comments. Ben?
I'm good, thank you, Mayor.
I'm fine, Mayor. Since we have a closed session, I'll hold off until next meeting.
All right. Just quick, real quick, so there is the Wellness Expo is going on today from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Crest Pier. So if you get an opportunity to get